Call the zoning commission regular meeting for Monday, May 16th to order. We have Donna missing, right? Then we have one alternate here. So Melissa, you can sit for Donna unless unless she shows. Okay, first order of business is the minutes of May 2nd. I noted in the minutes that it seemed that we carried along one abstention through all of the motions. And I don't remember anybody abstaining. Is that correct?
We abstained from them. Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. For the minutes, yeah.
But not on the, not on the motions to.
Oh, yeah, I think that's, yeah.
I think there were extensions from the minutes votes who said that they didn't, they hadn't attended, yeah.
There were abstentions from the minutes, I agree, but the motions subsequently on the applications, the first one on page two says, all in favor, no opposed, one abstention, six zero zero. And I don't believe that was an abstention.
I think that's an error. I think you're right.
Okay, that's on 12.
Yep.
Point sixteen.
Twenty-two fourteen, twenty-two thirteen, we've got the same.
I got it.
Same thing, I believe.
We'll, we'll, we'll listen to it one more time before we make those changes. But, but yeah, okay, we've got them.
Okay, and that's both of those on twenty-two thirteen. And there, but there were no abstentions in a, in a adjourning, so.
One never abstains from that.
Right.
Anyway, that's what I have. Anybody have anything else? Can we have a motion to approve the minutes of May second, please?
I'll move that we accept the minutes with a correction that was just cited.
Someone second?
Second.
Second by Ann, motion by Bruce. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay, six, nothing.
Pardon? Can I ask a question? Um, my Melissa?
Yes.
My AirPods weren't working. Am I actually appointed as a full member tonight?
Can you what?
Am I appointed as a full member tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm counting. I'm going, oh, I must have been appointed while I couldn't hear anything.
Sorry.
I don't know, thanks.
Okay, now, the first order of business is a, or second order of business is the application of twenty-two, it's new business actually, twenty-two dash fourteen for a new sign or for sign replacement. Someone want to speak to that?
The applicant is here tonight, Chatty from Artifacts is here.
Chatty?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, yes, so this is a replacement panel that is the same size as the original. Uh, we were before the design review board earlier this evening. Unfortunately, they did not have enough members to establish a quorum, but they did informally discuss the application and the members that were present had no objections to it. I believe George McGregor and Laura Barkowski were there as well.
Okay. This is really, it's just changing the, the content of the sign. It's the same size.
Correct, it's the same size. It's an aluminum panel, has vinyl graphics on it. And that's it.
Anybody have any comments?
No, although I, I would say that I just, I feel more comfortable if somebody other than the applicant shares with us the finding, to the extent there is a finding from DRB. And I know we have occasions where there's no finding over there, there's no report because they don't meet or whatever. But whether it's you, Dave, or Laura, or George, somebody other than the applicant should be explaining to us what DRB said about.
Well, we, there should be a staff report, I believe there is.
Kevin, if I just may, it was requested by the chair of that board that I would report it, but that's why I also mentioned that George McGregor and Laura Barkowski were present as well.
Right, and they, they will report.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would just say, and Commissioner Elliott, that we, we would concur. Uh, the, the, the board, the designer review board did not have a quorum. They, they were three members and they expressed support for the, uh, the, the sign application and the design, but were unable to take a vote because of a lack of a quorum.
Right. Okay, any other comments? I mean, it's really, like, to me, like, it was pretty straightforward. Joe Beal, who used to be the manager at Simsbury Bank, has moved over to the, take over that agency. So, uh, do you want to have a motion to approve this application? Do we have a motion recommended?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I move that application twenty-two dash fourteen of AMJ five-two-four LLC applicant owner artifacts agent application for a sign permit pursuant to section nine point three of the zoning regulations for the construction of a approximately eighteen square foot non-illuminated sign for the property located at five twenty-two Hot Metal Street. Accessors map G twelve, lot one thirty-two, lot zero zero, zero twenty-four, zone B two. The sign, the approval of the sign application is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction.
Thank you. You hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any discussion further in the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay, it carries six, nothing with no abstentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll get Joe in business. Uh, okay, now, the next item on the agenda is to discuss the ADU opt-out and the things that the state statute mandated. And I thought I sensed that there were some members of the, perhaps the majority of the people on the commission who felt that adopting some of the recommendations or some of the changes mandated by the, uh, the state statute uh, might enhance our regulations. And that we, if we're going to make those changes, uh, it seems like a good idea to make them before the POS, before the Board of Selectmen has to decide on the opt-out, so they know they're not dealing with a moving target. That was the reason for putting this on the agendas tonight. So let's open up the discussion. I thought Laura did a good job in her memo outlining the differences. Do we want to go through the differences one by one? Anybody have a preference?
I think going through them one by one and having discussion, not just read down the list, but do, you know, block number one, this, it really has to do with the the, uh, special exception format in public hearings.
It would also be helpful for anybody who's watching, you know, at home to be able to, um, follow along.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did, Laura and I did take her memo and, and put it into a little, into a single slide, which we're happy to show if that's easier than you working from your agenda packet.
Good idea.
Great, yeah.
Let's try that then.
Great.
You got that?
We got it.
Yep, thanks.
There we go. And so, yeah, this is just verbatim from, from her memo. And so, so just to be clear, uh, in the, in the white font on the left side of the screen when you're staring at it are the Simsbury existing current Simsbury zoning regulations related to, you know, category by category here on the accessory unit. And on the right is, uh, in, in black font, the state legislation, the comparable language for the category same legislation from the state legislation.
And just to be clear, we're talking about detached ADUs here, correct?
Both.
So in the first, so, uh, maybe, maybe it's easier if we, we kind of help you through it. So i- in the first is, um, is, is really about how we process them or how we require a review. So in Simsbury's case, in our current regulations case, we allow that, we allow both attached and detached ADUs. The attached ADUs, we require by a zoning commission approval by site plan, essentially a site plan review. For the detached units, we would require, we require a special exception review with public hearing. Under the state law, they are both considered, uh, permitted as a matter of right. So essentially would be a zoning compliance review by, uh, by staff.
Right, and I think we've discussed that. Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I feel like a broken record here or a grouch, but I don't know how many times now I've pointed out that the fighting words here have to do with the public hearing. And so, a lot of people aren't going to recognize what special exception or the difference between special exception and by right. But the issue is, there is a movement afoot to, and it's reflected in the state regulation, to eliminate exposure to public hearing, which most people don't realize that's not binding, but it's a step in a process. Uh, but our, our arrangement where we do have a special exception, public hearing on the detached units, gives the neighbors a chance to voice opinion. But, uh, you know, not so with a attached unit that's inside or, I, I don't know. I've scoured our regulations and some others, and I don't know what attached means. I know what inside the building envelope means, but, you know, you could build, you know, and a detached, it seems to me, and put a covered walkway. And you've got an attached structure and therefore you could skip the, uh, special.
I think you're, you're right that, that, I think that should be clarified that.
Yeah, it, it's a bit vague.
Yeah, you know, it should be, I, I think it should say inside the existing building.
Our reg used to call for a shared door, so that made it pretty clear that it had to be inside.
Yeah, but that's a separate, a separate section.
That's further down the list.
I know, that's, that's what the difference between our internal and external.
But you know, Kevin, over on East Wheaton Street near you is, is that, or a few blocks, it's not really near you, but down the road is the one where they, they actually turned the garage into a separate house, and there's two houses in that lot now. So, we, and they did it by claiming that the portico that are over connecting the two made it one building.
There you go.
We should, we should say clearly that it's inside, not attached.
Okay, so, so I'm hearing, so what I'm hearing is that you, you, um, you would recommend and, and the staff, once, once we get to put in pen to paper, uh, clarify your intent, the, the commission's intent of attached meaning internal to the primary residence.
Right, so we'll have actual definitions within the code of what, of what they mean.
Well, it could be that the majority will want, get rid of the distinction, I don't know, but.
If we maintain a distinction, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Ann, I can't see you. Ann?
Yeah, I'm here.
I see you, but now, um, do you have any comments?
Not right now.
Okay.
Although I think you, the idea of the, um, indoor, the door is, is probably, probably works pretty easily for most people.
So, my thoughts on this topic, my thoughts on this topic have changed a little bit over the course of last year with the, the change in, in our housing situation. You know, when we first started talking about this uh, in response to the initial bill back in, was it twenty twenty-one? Um, you know, we still had a really good supply of affordable housing or housing that would qualify as affordable, but for the fact that it was not de-restricted. And obviously, the housing boom has, has changed that significantly. You know, because houses, even houses of more modest houses having snatched up by investors and are being, um, sold at, at prices that are out of range for people who would need to qualify affordable housing. Um, so that doesn't change my opinion that detached, we need to approach detached ADUs on a zone-by-zone basis. That's still my opinion. Um, but I think the, and this is probably a larger discussion, but the discussion of affordable housing and how we're going to get there has been very, um, I think it's more urgent than it has been in the past. And, and that's, that's a, that's a discussion that's frankly above our pay grade in many regards. There are policy decisions that need to be made by the Board of Selectmen. There's an affordable housing plan that will probably need to be revisited. Um, but I think that certainly makes this discussion about ADUs in general all the more pressing.
Well, this, we, we need to make, I think I'd like to see whether or not we can get agreement on the first block in. I believe that we ourselves want to retain our current language with perhaps modification to more clearly define attached units. So that we don't lose the ability to have a public hearing on the detached units and that we do maintain the site plan for the attached units. Is that correct? What do people think?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. I think that, I know, I, I think that one of the things that can be frustrating to people is, is understanding what the regulations are. So I think it's important, you know, to clarify by, you know, clarifying definitions and et cetera, making it as simple as possible, but I don't have any issue with that first, um, maintaining the first block.
So, the supporting consensus so far is for maintaining our practice of requiring a special permit in the public hearing as part of it for detached.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is important to.
And the, uh, attached units would be, continue to be available by right. So it's just a matter of submitting the plans and getting a review by the building official and.
Bruce, I don't think that by right is the right language.
That's what the state uses.
That's what the state uses, but what that means is they, they go to staff and they get a permit, not whereas we require them to bring a site plan to us.
No. Well, okay, well, I know we do, but you're suggesting the state was compelling us, would compel approval without seeing a site plan?
Right.
No, I don't think so, but it's a not, not a huge point for me because I don't, I mean, I don't personally support the configuration of the state regulation. So, I'm in, and I want to see what we're doing, continue. I think it has some value.
I would say that my feelings about whether it's a site plan or a special inspection, exception, again, it comes down to what size lots are we talking about? I'm not sure you care about a special exception, even in a public hearing. If we're talking about a particularly large lot, who, you know, who really cares? What kind of neighbor is going to care if you've got a, you know, a six hundred or depending upon how large the, um, the square footage is that we adopt? You know, if you're on five acres, who cares if somebody's got an extra six hundred square foot, you know, thing on their parcel, right? But it's a whole different story.
Your neighbors.
But do they really care if you've got fi- if you've got five acres?
It depends on where they place it.
Depends on where they place it.
Sure, sure.
Melissa, if you had been here when we had the discussion about the guy who had a detached garage, who wanted to put a, um, in-law apartment in the detached garage, he had eight acres. His neighbor objected, I believe he spoke for forty-three minutes.
At the public hearing.
In the public hearing. So, uh, I, I think the detached, uh, requiring a public hearing for that is, is, is not onerous, and I, and I think it's appropriate because the neighbors do want to know when a new building goes in or a new use is made of an auxiliary building.
Well, I, what I, I think it has some relationship to when your neighbor builds an addition on their house. It's not, and it's not using it as an ADU, they're just building an addition. And you're, as the abuser, you don't have any say at all. You don't get to go to a public hearing. They don't ask you for feedback or criticism. It could be, you know, this strange looking thing.
As long as they abide by the setbacks, that's fine.
The setbacks in the building code, yeah. But I think, Dave, you, that reminds us though of that particular case. And if I remember right, Bob DiCrescenzo's comments had to do with the wording of our regulation and the fact that that proposal had to do with demolishing the existing structure and build a new one.
Right.
So he wasn't proposing an attached or detached in an existing building. And I think that's what DiCrescenzo said, the, the regulation didn't allow for a new building, it had to go into an existing one or something to that effect. So maybe George or the staff could look that up before we finish up.
That is correct, and, and subsequently, both parties in that discussion have moved out of town.
Right.
Um, let's, let's talk about the second line. The ADU shall not exceed six hundred square feet for twenty-five percent of the gross area of the primary dwelling, whichever is less. The state says a thousand square feet or thirty percent of the primary dwelling. Everybody have a comment here?
I have a couple, but I'll let everybody go first. I gotta find my paper.
I don't object to, you know, re, reevaluating the sizes, but I think here is where I agree with Melissa, where it definitely depends on, you know, it depends on lot size, it depends on, you know, where, where it's located. There's a, there's a, I feel like that, that's more of an impact. Um, we can't just say across the board. I live in Terrifil, you know, I mean, that, that, that would be a big, a big, big property on a little lot. So I know that, um, it's still going by the square footage of the house, but sometimes people go up on their property, so they have a much bigger square footage, but it's still a tiny lot.
Okay.
I would be, I mean, we, we had a larger, uh, square foot requirement a few years ago before we dropped it down. So I would be okay with exploring going back to, you know, this thousand square feet if that's an issue with the public.
Thousand square feet was what it was before we made the change in, what, two thousand nineteen?
And then what we found out from the guy that did the, uh, the motel, the, the hotel conversion in downtown is that he thought that six hundred square feet was actually adequate, but I, I'm not opposed to going to a thousand square feet.
So I, I am opposed to going to a thousand square feet in something like an R fifteen. You put a thousand square feet on my lot, you got, that's figured the footprint of my house, right?
Oh, it can't be, because it can't be more than thirty percent.
But I'm saying, if you put, if you put, I live in an R fifteen. If I'm my neighbor, I don't want two thou- two two houses that size on, on an R fifteen. You're starting to squash it up. But I think, uh, you know, and, and anything larger, I think that's perfectly reasonable. I think this is where the zone-by-zone approach is. You know, let's, let's do it where we can, you know?
Remember, Melissa, the percentage trumps the six hundred to the thousand square feet.
Sure.
So if you have a twelve or, uh, two thousand square foot house in an R fifteen lot, you're, you're limited to six hundred square feet.
Yeah.
So the.
Actually, it wasn't.
Yeah, I guess you're right, because, um, you know, again, I, I agree with you, Melissa, but you know, between house square footage and then setbacks, you know, there is a limitation for those smaller lots where you can only go so, do so much.
I, I can't remember a case where we've had people really complaining about that kind of situation, because we've had public hearings for everything up until uh, the change that was made two years ago.
So I think one of my, one of my goals here is not just to, um, you know, protect people in R fifteen or something like that. I'd like us to say yes to as much of the state statute as we can while making it appropriate for Simsbury and appropriate for more case, by case basis. Maybe that's, maybe that's too, um, ambitious a goal, but.
Well, that's what we're, I think that's what we're calling them, so I don't think.
That's why I would, I would go with a thousand square feet and thirty percent, just to, so we match that, that removes one limitation that we have. The, the opponents would say we're more restrictive than the state.
And Kevin, you said that's what it used to be, before we changed it?
Yeah, we, it used to be a thousand.
Okay.
And what is more restrictive, Kevin?
Pardon?
What is more restrictive than the state?
Our, our current rule.
Oh, yes, right.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I don't know that we necessarily need to make it that restrictive. Uh, most of them, I don't know that we ever had a thousand square foot request, but maybe we have.
Yeah, we have, remember, um, we were up on pasture lane.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He got that from the judge.
Yeah.
The influence of the court.
Yeah, that was just giving the house.
But I think.
Was he more than, was he more than thirty, thirty percent of the first floor, though?
Uh, more than thirty percent? I don't think so.
No, so I think he would have been, well, whichever is smaller. Um, yeah, that was Schoenhardt.
Schoenhardt, it was, he, he wanted a thousand square feet to rent.
Yeah, well.
You, you, you could be in either one of the units.
Right.
So he was giving the upstairs to rent, and then he was going to live in the basement. So you could say that, you know, his percentage of it.
He had a two-story house there, he wasn't going to move to the basement.
Right.
Well, yeah, but he was in the lower level.
What are, what are our thoughts about the size component if it's an attached versus a detached?
Well.
What's your question, Melissa? Melissa, what is your question again?
Um, do we feel any differently about the size, depending upon whether the ADU we're talking about is attached versus detached?
I don't know. I, I, I don't, but.
I don't, yeah.
Could I just interject really quick, Mr. Chair? We already have a limitation on detached accessory structures. They can't exceed fifty percent of the cumulative accessory structures on the property of the building, of the primary building. So there's two limitations. So if we look at our zoning regulations for detached accessory structures or just any accessory structures, the maximum cumulative building area for all accessory structures on the lot shall not exceed a total of fifty percent of the building area of the primary building.
So we're already matched. The garage and your detached shed and your chicken coop and all the other things, they can't cumulatively exceed fifty percent.
Perfect.
Okay.
Just to let you know, it's in a different section, but it would apply.
Yep, it's right above this.
That, yeah, that language doesn't specifically refer to accessory dwellings, but it's clearly, you know, an issue that if you have a barn and you want to make it into an accessory dwelling, you know, then you have, you know, that counts towards you fifty percent.
Right, I remember
Yeah.
the interpretation that, that town council gave us was that it has to be an existing building.
Well, I looked at some other towns to get a little more perspective and not to pick at individual issues, but I, I wasn't all that sensitive to what's up between accessory, attached and detached, but none of the towns I looked at distinguished for size limitations between attached and detached. So they may do it somewhere, but, um, you know, not right around here. But what I found, and what I, what I'm interested in is the one I like the most, you have to hear this, maybe nobody will support it, but Canton, their, their standard now for ADUs, attached and detached, their standard is for minimum size, none. They have no standard for minimum size. It's very common to have about four hundred square feet stated in your regulation as a, you know, as a minimum size. And then the maximum in Canton is thirty percent of the primary residence square footage. And they give no stated maximum square footage. So it's thirty percent of whatever your house is. If it's a big house, it's a lot of square feet. If it's a small house, it's a small number of square feet. But they have a, a, another provision in their regulation that lets them, and, and they say that the ADUs that are attached and meet the requirements are just a an approval of the site plan and their by right. But then for detached and attached that, that don't meet, they can submit for a special permit and have a public hearing, and the planning and zoning can approve an attached that didn't meet the requirements. If there, and there's some topics, some areas that they describe might be persuasive. And I think we, we saw a, a letter when we were accepting testimony on this topic some months ago, a, a very compelling letter that had to do with the issues of trying to configure one of these spaces for a handicapped individual. And I know, I don't, I can't remember the thought really crossing my mind or sinking in about what if you did, you were trying to accommodate some. About what if you did, you were trying to accommodate somebody who was handicapped and you needed a handicap bathroom, I think we all have some awareness of how large the code described uh the handicap bathrooms can be. And you know, that would really take up a lot of your four hundred square foot limited size. So anyway, I I'm interested in us coming away with a larger size. I like the idea of of no square footage. Then we don't have to argue the question of if we're discriminating because people with small houses and people with large houses. The large house folks are gonna say, why are we getting squeezed with a thousand square foot limitation? And they have a five thousand square foot house or an eight thousand square foot house. Uh, I don't know why we, why, why would we take on that argument, but it doesn't mean much. Thirty percent is the number. If we say you can do thirty percent, that's it. But over in Avon, they also have a provision that says that uh basically, they use a twenty-five percent and a thousand square feet. But they have a provision that says that uh the commission can modify the standards uh for up to an additional ten percent to preserve public health, safety, welfare, and provide a more practical layout for the principal or accessory dwelling living unit. So that gives uh, and there's a limitation, they can add ten percent to the standards, whichever standard they're having trouble meeting. The commission make an accommodation. So that's a way to handle like somebody who's really pressed for handicap, you know, whatever. Or issues with staircases and stuff that might be unusual. Whereas ours is just straightforward. Here are the numbers and you bring your thing in, or don't bother bringing it if you can't meet those, the staff will tell them that. It's not eligible for hearing. And I think we we ought to consider doing better than that. If we wanted to use the thirty percent standard or the twenty-five, I don't, I don't know why we couldn't add some language that gives the commission and the applicant latitude to like an attached unit apply for a special exception. And take your chances on the public hearing process and if you get it or you don't, but I think that don't suggest that that should be an option for people that are in detached units. Because I think the public hearing process is valuable there. So I did come across to the uh the point that that Laura was raising, another part of it has to do with the way we regulate, what we refer to in our regulations as home-based businesses. Home-based businesses in our regulations, you can, you know, we can look at it yourself. It's on page eleven and twelve. Um, that's the fifty percent one that she referred to. But on this, in the Simsbury zoning regs, on pages thirteen and fourteen, you'll see the home-based business that is is limited to twenty-five percent of the floor area devoted to the accessory unit. So twenty-five percent of the house uh for home-based business, that's that's, you know, in the case of the fellow that Dave was referring to, they they were very straightforward. They wanted to have a rental unit in their house. The simple as that. They weren't trying to accommodate loved ones. They wanted a rental unit. So they could continue to age in place. They needed the income. So that's becoming more of a driving issue between, by people trying to get an income source out of their building. And so I, these units, to me, an ADU being used as an income driver, that's no diff, that's a home business. Now, our definition of a home business may be a little vague on that point, but if you can get a twenty-five percent limit for a home-based business, it says nothing about a thousand square feet or five hundred square feet or any square feet, just says twenty-five percent. I'd live with twenty-five percent, you know, and and get rid of the thousand square feet or thirty percent, just call it twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Easy.
We need to uh
And it's driven by our our own regulations.
We have some other comments on this section. I mean, I, I have no problem with with uh going with thirty percent. How about you, Kevin?
I I don't have a problem. And and to answer Bruce here, yes. The idea behind ADUs now is that they're not just for family members. They are as a a new way of getting rental properties in town.
Right.
So
Right.
So we shouldn't think of it as just a family member or, because especially, you know, you can approve it for a family member. And then three years later, the family member's gone. It is now a rental unit.
Right. Um, how about the idea of having some sort of increment increase for the maximum size? If you have handicapped uh bathroom and uh, what do you call it? Exit and so on. Like if we say it's handicap accessible, you can go so many square feet more, ten percent more.
I like where Bruce uh said that Avon had, um, I don't know necessarily about the ten percent, but I liked the wording. Where the the zoning board has some some um discretion.
Yeah, could you read the, could you read the, could you read the Avon wording again?
Yeah. My recollection is I tried to get this word for word, but I I may not have quite succeeded. But what I wrote down was the commission may provide, may, the commission may modify standards above, that's the one thousand to twenty-five percent, may modify standards above to an additional ten percent to preserve public health, safety, welfare, and provide a more practical layout of the principal or accessory living unit. They're limited to adding ten percent. They can't, you know, take that twenty-five percent limit and say, okay, you can get fifty percent, you know, on your place. No, that, they have some latitude to go o- over by ten percent in their approval.
But one of the, one of the things that we're encouraged not to do is to have arbitrary sort of things like that.
Yeah.
And it it would be better to say, okay, if you're thinking about handicap accessible units, okay, you can get some percentage for that. If there's some other criteria you can establish.
Well, you're right. I was thinking the same thing, but I I'm not a designer. I don't know how to describe, you know, in some sort of universal terms what the dimensions are, or even a code statement about a handicap bathroom.
Well, handicap, you know, handicapped accessible is a
Yeah.
Is a
There's standards for the height of the sink and
All of that, and if they
Cupboards underneath.
They can get ten percent more, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, are you saying ten percent of the thirty, or are you saying a total of forty?
Uh, in my mind, that would be a total of forty. That's what I would tell. You know, but if somebody's working on, you know, fo- four hundred and fifty square feet, it's not a lot.
Yeah, but what the architects have shown us that that you can get a handicapped a unit in six hundred square feet.
Have they shown us? I don't know about that.
Yeah, there are some of that new, that new iron horse.
Yeah, that's right.
But if if we're going to a thousand square feet, do we need the latitude on the ten percent?
We, we're going to thirty percent, Melissa. We've said thousand square feet. I think we we got rid of the fixed number. Did we not?
I'm I'm in favor of getting rid of the fixed number and just use a percentage myself, but that's just me. Well, I ended up being a redundant too.
I think other people uh concurred with that. Did you not? Anybody object to that?
Nope.
No, I think I could do that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I think it's a simple and easy to
A simpler way to do it.
Yeah.
And if we added some augment, whether it's five percent or ten percent.
I think that's a great idea myself, but you know.
Yeah, I I don't know that I would go the additional by a percentage.
Because it gets too big or it's too hard to define.
No, it's just a, it's just giving us more discretion. We should have
So if we're looking at a five thousand square foot house, we're talking about a fifteen hundred square foot ADU.
Yeah.
That's big.
That's big.
Yeah, but so's the house. Five thousand square feet, a big house. Well, on my street it is. It would be.
There are lots of
I I didn't understand.
Well, I'm a little worried about, I'd staff a opinion on that one about giving the commission discretion on certain applications to go work.
I, I don't like that. That's um
Yeah, I don't like that either.
I think if we said, we specify what the condition is that you can get the extra.
So what George has to say.
George?
I I would, I would agree with what everybody's saying. I would be very careful about um, s- some arbitrary criteria that, you know, that 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 become, can be clearly subject, subjective. Um, I think the sliding scale works frankly with a single number of of thirty percent or twenty-five percent, or wherever number you're headed, without needing to put in that extra uh subjectivity.
Yeah, I would just stick with the
Yeah.
Because thirty percent is is pretty large.
I think, I think a fifteen hundred square feet is pretty darn large for a detached ADU on any other, you know.
There are many houses in my neighborhood that are less than fifteen hundred square feet.
I know, I know.
Property.
What about going back to twenty-five percent?
I'm bad at math. What is that?
Twelve fifty.
I I would go with the thirty percent just because it matches what the state said, and that's one less argument against Simsbury having its own regs.
So what about thirty hundred or twelve hundred square feet? You know, I mean, or twelve, you know.
Well, there's, there's no right number, I don't think.
I I think fifteen hundred's really big.
I mean, are we able to factor in lot size at all? Like, I mean, you could have a small house on a big piece of property. So you know, you're you're being penalized because you you live in a small har- farmhouse and, you know, on on eight acres. You know, I mean, I feel like maybe lot size should be factored in some way.
Saying, that's what I was saying.
Well, the thing is that you know, speaking in sort of the larger scale scope here, that is factored in because the five thousand square foot houses are gonna be on well, some of them are are forty. Uh, I mean, uh, excuse me, are
Twenty-five. There are twenty-five that have them.
Thousand square feet.
Yeah, they may have them because they got it added on to, but when they were originally built, um, there tends to be, you know, a certain size house based on the value of the land that makes sense. You don't you know, necessarily, you don't commonly buy a huge lot and build a tiny house.
Hmm, I'm thinking more like
It's a nice idea, but people don't
Yeah.
Well, we don't have many farms around here anymore either.
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say again, from what I'm hearing is that, you know, the 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 concern is certainly from a, from a practical matter and neighbors and adjoining property owners is is more concerning for the detached units, and you've got a special exception process to 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 make those decisions and place reasonable conditions into those kinds of things.
But if we're, if we're having the as of right, you know, if we're, not as of right, but if we're allowing up to fifteen, you know, say thirty percent of fifteen hundred square feet, we can't deny an application on the special exception because of the size if our, if our zoning regulations permit that, because that will be an arbitrary and capricious denial, right?
No, we have a whole slew of standards.
You have, you have a whole set of standards, right?
Right.
You just have to apply them.
We'd, we haven't fine tuned any standards that would deal with you know, the the notion of Avon where you add ten percent if they want more square footage for certain good reasons. And there's a fear that we would be drawn into at least over time. So fairly relaxed approach to that and vague standards. But we have written standards in our regulations now for judging the uh, what what we do for the uh the ones that require public hearing.
Okay, um, we have, we have, I think, talked about the second block for a long time. I think most, everybody had agreed at least one point, maybe ten minutes ago, that thirty percent was a good number and that we could live with that.
Yeah.
Uh, and it matches the state statute, so it, it matches the the um suggestion, my suggestion that we do something for ADUs uh that have handicapped uh facilities uh doesn't seem to have flown here. Um, but we did have some comments from people in our public hearing. Uh, we're very concerned about uh handicapped people in ADUs. Thank you both, Bruce. But let's, let's skip that and go on to the next um
Okay.
block, which is shall not have separate utilities from the primary dwelling. And
Yeah, so your, so your, so Dave, so your ordinance, our ordinance today says that we cannot have separate utilities. And the state, the state, the state code that that says that you cannot require uh property be served by separate utilities.
And and I, I don't, I don't, what do you think, people?
I can't remember why we ever changed it to
We were going for more
Preventing separate
Open your apartment.
We, we were reacting to trying to get known people in the accessory unit. And people were, in our public hearings over the years, have favored uh relatives and in-laws and uh, we felt that was a way of controlling, controlling uh the resident. But I, I have, uh, we added, we added that in our last uh
Yeah, I know, I can remember. I can remember all but why. Exact, I mean, clearly why, as sort of
It was trying to, trying to make it more likely that it would be a relative.
Yeah.
Not mandating it, but making more likely.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, you know, separate utilities often means clearly a rental unit.
Well, do we have to speak to that issue at all? I mean,
We can just adopt the state and then we can do it either way we want, if we adopt the state's provision.
We're, we're not adopting anything of the state. Come on.
Well, yeah, I think the alternative would be you can, you um, it would be permissible either to have separate utilities or um, to have common utilities.
My, my suggestion is
Right, but you have to put in the regulation what the only two alternatives there are.
No, Bruce, the, all we have to do is drop that item, that line in our regs.
That's what I was gonna say, Dave. Good thought.
If if people agree with that, then we can move on to the next one.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
At least one ADU must, what does it say?
So our, our la- our language is, 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 I think, very similar to the state language. It just, it's just said in a different way. I mean, I I think the state says one ADU per single family lot, and I
Right.
That's what we're trying to say at the same time.
But the owner gets the choice of whether it's uh attached or detached.
Yeah, I
I think that's later.
No, that's right there.
Is that this one?
Yeah. In they, in both cases, we're saying one.
I think
In our case, we say you don't get a choice of the detached. We tell you the one is an attached.
Wait, just a second. Just, just a second. I think that in this block, we have reversed okay, we've reversed the state statute and us.
Awesome.
We, our regs say you can only have one ADU per lot.
Yeah.
Single family homes, that's what our regs say. The state says what's in white on the left.
You're right, Dave, because if you look at the notes in our drop box, it's, they're flipped.
Okay, we flipped it. My, I flipped, I flipped it. Sorry.
You're just testing us.
Not Laura, I flipped it.
You're testing us, that's what you do.
Oh. Wait a minute, I was looking at something else.
I don't think there's any issue with our wanting to keep our reg.
Well. No, because it reflects our intention around allowing the by right of the uh attached units, but the state statute doesn't separate the definition of when internal and external are all in the mix. And so when they say one, that means the by right is gonna apply to whatever's there. It's gonna be by right if the owner wants to put in.
We don't say anything about the by right. The state says by right.
I know.
We say one ADU can be allowed for each lot with a single family home.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I kind of read the states to imply that at least means you could have more than one.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I think one is a very reasonable.
That's correct.
Yes, I think you guys are good with your language as it stands today.
I think we like our language, but all right, let's go to the next one. ADU shall be accessible from the primary ADU shall be accessible from the primary by an operable door in an attached ADU. And it says, the state says we're prohibited from requiring a passageway between the ADU and the primary dwelling. This is another thing that we added when we edited our regs, uh, two years ago. And my opinion is that's a, a, a line that could be dropped, could be removed again. We put it in.
Yeah.
What do you think? Anybody?
I think you're right. We should take it out of there. You, you can't this, that, that, that statement, that line, that requirement only applies to the attached units. You can't have a doorway from the detached unit into the, the primary residence. It doesn't work. So I think as consistently as, as, as possible, these regulations should apply to attached and detached alike, except for the public hearing thing.
Yep. Now we have, the next line is one off-street parking place. And the state says we can't require more than one off-street parking place. So we're sort of, we can, I don't know. I think we can just ignore this, this thing and keep our reg.
Well, I feel like they kind of say the same thing. You're not required to have more than one, and we're requiring at least one, which means one. So aren't they kind of saying the same thing?
Well, I think the state uh, statute
I don't know.
The intention there was that there could be up to four ADUs per lot.
Oh, yeah.
That's what they had in the back of their mind, I think. Um, and, but anyway, I, I think our, our thing is fine. You have to have at least one parking plot place. I, I don't see a reason to require more, just.
Well,
I think the current language is, is reasonable. Your language, yeah, our language.
In some ways, that'll self-regulate. If that's not adequate parking, they'll have trouble getting tenants and, you know, a renter.
Yeah.
Yeah, the difference is the state's going for a more densely populated area where you would have on-street parking.
And you also have bus transportation.
Yeah, and, and we don't really have on-street parking.
Right.
It doesn't happen on occasion, but we don't generally have on-street parking.
Okay, so can we, um,
So, so I, so remember Laura's memo, it also, she also added a, a, a number of bullet points to, to the, to her second page. They talked about the other requirements, um, that may or may not have been directly applicable, but obviously was important to the discussion. Um, see if I can't.
Bring those up.
How about that? You see that?
Yep.
Okay, so these were, and, and, um, so so these are essentially things that are in the state law. The first one is, um, you cannot require a, a, a familial marital or, or, or other type of relationship. And I don't think our language does that.
We do.
Yes. So we cannot prohibit minimum age. Uh, our language does not do that. You cannot prohibit, it prohibits requiring ADU renewals.
Yeah, we, we only do that for
Short term.
Short-term rentals.
Yep. Um, can't be more restrictive than, than the principal dwelling unit setbacks.
We are.
Um, it says you cannot, yeah, the, the, this, this was kind of confusing. When there's language in the new law that says you cannot place a condition on an A, on a, on a new ADU to correct, correct an existing non-conformity. I'm not sure that would apply at any point in, in your deliberations.
Do you think they mean that you can't condition the approval of an ADU to correct a non-conformity that is pre-existing in the primary dwelling?
I, I think that we we're opting out of the state law. And I think this particular comment, um, we wouldn't want to have to adhere to it because there might be a case where guy wants an ADU and he's willing to correct a non-conformity and we want to impose that.
Are we allowed to opt out of these provisions or just the other ones?
It was my understanding, these aren't options. These are
Right.
The new state law.
Is that correct, George?
Again, if, if you, uh, uh, remember, if, if you opt out, you can, you can construct the ADU regulations to fit our community. This is, this is suggesting that if you, um, if you, if you don't opt out and these apply, these are things you cannot do.
Okay, but if we opt out, we
Still can't do.
No, I don't know that that's the case.
No, you, I, you, you, you can. That's the, that's the, that's the whole point of opting out.
We can opt out of all this stuff too?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what George is saying.
Yes.
Okay.
Not that we've done any of them yet.
Oh, look at that.
No, it's just that this particular one, maybe, you know, we, we wouldn't want to adopt a condition that says that. When we might
You know, and it, just, just, just to, to put it to the final point, there may be other reasons not to include some of these regulations. You know, the, 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 the first one, even though you, you could have a choice, um, I think you enter, enter into some, some quite dangerous territory by requiring a familial relationship. Um, I, I certainly wouldn't recommend that under any conditions.
We, we've never done that.
Right, and you wouldn't, and you wouldn't. I'm just saying that, uh, I think the state laws is saying that.
We could send Laura out to check all those.
Right, that's right.
Well,
Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
Uh, this may be redundant. Maybe this isn't sinking in, but uh, if we opt out, then can we start using age and marital sex, sexual orientation?
I, I, as I just, I just said, I think there are other, there are other
I, I don't know why we're talking about these. I thought these were fixed. These are part of the new law we're in. Regardless of what we do, on the port, the points that Laura listed in the chart, these others are settled now. They're settled off.
No, they're not part of the same law that we're opting out of, Bruce. Um, it's just that I don't think we had this, these were
I can't believe they let y'all opt out of that stuff.
But I think it's kind of a moot point because I don't think that any of these are an issue for us.
Yeah, and I think when Laura did it, it wasn't, we didn't, we weren't in conflict, so it didn't matter.
All right, and George, you were kind of halfway through them.
Uh, you know, I think, I think we're, we're, we're almost done. Uh, uh, so you get towards the end and again, um, the, the law does not require, the law does not require the ADU to be affordable, and so you wouldn't have to require that. I mean, that's really it. I mean, I, I think you handled on the previous page. Those are the, those are the primary issues that you're dealing with.
Well, actually, the, the biggest one is the, the second from last. That we require the property owner to reside.
Oh, yes.
So that is, that's, you know, I don't know, uh, Melissa might have mentioned that, you know, people are buying houses and splitting them into so that they can use them as rentals, as investment properties. That might not be something that we want to do.
We, we're, yeah, we're not, we don't want to do that. I don't think anybody part of you with that.
I don't want to do what?
So we're saying the same thing. You're talking about, do we want to give up our owner occupancy requirement?
No.
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 I, I haven't come across a town yet that doesn't have that requirement.
And do we want to add something about regulating the use of ADUs as short-term rental?
No.
We don't?
There's a separate, we have a separate thing. ADUs are, uh, short-term rentals are regulated by or managed by a permit process that the, the selectmen
Oh, you mean like the Airbnb thing that we did last year?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so, so ours is a permitting process, not a zoning check.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay.
Now that Bruce, Bruce, Australia said, we said, I, I'll go back and look at, because I, I, I do think that you make a, you make an interesting point. I mean, how, how, how possibly could you, could you, uh, could you prohibit based on age or, or type of occupation? I think you can make a good point. So I'll read that one more time.
Okay. I think we ought to, uh, ask staff to make a draft based on our discussion tonight for us to review next time. Is that fair?
But you're not, Dave, are you talking about it, looking for some final sort of text for the regulation change or just clarity?
The draft of our, our regulations are a page and a half. Um, I think if staff could create a draft of that and give it to us
Okay.
And review it.
Yeah, the changes are actually fairly minimal. We're getting rid of two, two requirements and just changing the percentage.
Right. So I think, you know, have them go through it. We do have this one little sticking thing about the, what, what is an, an attached unit? Should be an enclosed unit or an included unit or something. But let's let staff wrestle with that.
A shared wall or something.
Um, and, and then we can, um, address it again the next time, and if we're satisfied and can fix it, then we can set a public hearing date.
I think it's nice to see that we really don't have that many changes because I, I think there are a lot of folks out there who think perhaps that there were a lot of discrepancies between the two, but in fact, we're not that far apart.
No, you're right.
But they're right on something with many towns in Connecticut that are nowhere near where we are. They're nowhere near the track record or the, the, the regulations that we've had for decades. And so there's big change needed in Connecticut, but not necessarily in Simsbury. In fact, that's, I offer that as a statement. It's not needed in Simsbury. Big change, but we can always do better. And we're in that process, yeah.
And we're really gonna have to grapple with, with affordable housing. But that's a discussion for another night.
Affordable housing is, uh, it's an interesting problem. It's, uh, not one that we're gonna solve in a meeting or two.
Nope.
It's been, um, worked on for fifty years all over the country, so.
Yep.
And generally, it involves public investment.
Mm-hmm, yes, it does.
Which means it's a order selection issue, not ours. But anyway.
Other, other places that have adopted ADUs have not necessarily seen an increase in affordable housing.
Well, same thing happened with, with our multifamily housing. Didn't create, create affordability, so.
Right.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Is there anything else, George?
I have nothing else. No. What? No.
So, so what else? Just go over the plan. So is the plan for us to take a look at it before we schedule a public hearing or are we scheduling the public hearing?
Let's, let's look at a draft next time, and if we can agree on the draft, schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
Changes to the draft will schedule a public hearing.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else tonight?
Because we would want some, some feedback from the public on this and, and the, the rename spirit committee, whatever they're called now. Um, I mean, they have a process, actually Thursday night is their first meeting where they're trying to do an education on this and get a dialogue going in the community on affordable housing.
Why have I not seen that?
It was, it was last Thursday. Yeah, yeah.
Gee, how did it go?
Actually, George was on the panel.
I was.
How'd that go, George?
It went well. It was well attended and people asked very good questions and all I did was do a very fifty thousand foot view of, of our process and how we review residential projects and, and what our process looks like. So that was, that was, that was what I was asked to do as an introduction to policy and regulation to housing in Simsbury.
I'm just curious how the zoning commission is, is not somehow like included in this?
Not our territory. That's, it's as simple as that, but
Well, we could be included in the future.
There's a planning commission for planning.
Yeah.
But George, it was George, it was, um, Rick.
Rick Korea.
Korea, I don't remember the third one.
And Ed Montague from
From the old housing authority.
Okay.
Yep.
I know I'm not supposed to, this is Wendy. I know I'm not supposed to weigh in here, but that was advertised for, I think for months all over the place at Housing Forum, um, just to put that out there.
Yes.
But it, it should be taped, right, George or Wendy?
I didn't hear what you said, Kevin.
So there should be, it should have been filmed by SCTV, so it should
It is, it's online. It is online because I couldn't make it, so I'm planning to watch it.
Yeah.
I heard it was great.
Yeah, so everyone can watch George film the view.
Dave, let me just offer one more thing. For anybody that doesn't go by there regularly, the, uh, excavation has started down at, uh, what are those apartments across from the Weetok Firehouse? Talca Ridge. They're starting, they're underway on that last building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep, big pit.
The, the framing is progressing, framing achieving on the last ten. There are approximately ten units.
Right. Okay, here, a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Kevin? Second?
Second, I'll second.
Second by
Diane.
Diane, thank you. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Oh, Kerry, six, nothing. Thank you.
All right.